Call me in order to stand for the pledge if you're able to. We'll have to lead you to the flag by the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any justice at all.
Call, order, roll calls, right?
Right, please.
Counselperson Josh Aaron.
Counselperson Brad Byrd.
Mayor Jimmy John Kane.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah O'Jones.
All right. Before we move any farther into it, we've got a presentation tonight. We've got Carla has come back to receive another award. It'll be from the Government Finance Officers Association, which you receive this every year you're here. And I believe this is the seventeenth or eighteenth year we've received this.
The overall, yeah.
And it's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the GFOA. It's for states and small cities that go above and beyond in their financial reporting, which Carla's always done. And it's quite an achievement to get it once or twice, but we've got it all these years in the room. So we've been very fortunate in that. Very happy that Carla came back and received this year, right? She's done excellent work here, and I'm sure where she's at now, they're gonna appreciate this as much. But it's only two buttons on this one because the other plaque up there is plumb full already. So we had to start a new plaque.
Smile, Jimmy. You're looking a little grumpy there. Sorry. We were color-coded tonight, is what she said.
Well, this is, for those of the general public that doesn't know, this is quite an award. It's quite an achievement. It takes some very high financial standards in reporting to even meet the possibility of getting this, which Smith Schaefer's always been quite impressed with our finance directors. They're quite impressed with you, and we thank you very much once again for getting us again. So thank you, Carla, and thanks for coming back. Well, she knows she doesn't have to stay. All right, we're looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Anything from the table?
I don't believe we've got anything.
Anything from here, guys?
I'll make a motion to approve the general.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We're looking for approval of the regular meeting minutes of January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Approve the minutes. If there's something you see or a question, ask the time.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. So it takes us to finance and budget. You have the accounts payable and the additional accounts payable in front of you. If we have any questions on any of that, we'll ask Bill about it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion on any of it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That's gonna take us into motions and general business. The first item under motions and general business tonight is approving plans and ordering bids for the twenty twenty-five CIP project, which will be Eleventh Avenue Northwest. City Engineer Jenna has completed the plan suspects for the twenty twenty-five CIP project. The plans are based upon the decisions made by city staff, including the city administrator Schimmel, Public Works Director Hale, and City Commissioner Cox. With advertising advisement from City Engineer over routine staff at SEH. Project purpose is to realign Eleventh Avenue Northwest at Tenth Street Northwest to eliminate the existing offset of intersection for traffic safety improvements, as well as improve upon the township gravel roadway to upgrade it to an urban roadway connected to the urban neighborhood of Bear Cave Estates. Plans include the elimination of one of Bear Cave gravel parking lot entrances due to its close proximity to the intersection. A new parking lot entrance will be provided off Eleventh Avenue roadway alignment. There will be a ten-foot wide multi-use patunus trail that will run along the east side of the new alignment, connecting the existing trail system at Bear Cave Park to Bear Cave Estates. In order to make these improvements, the roadway will be a minimal width of twenty-six feet, and the existing double box culvert will need to be extended to provide both the roadway and trail crossing. Storm sewer collection system will be added. Two retaining bases will meet to meet stormwater management requirements. There's also been an alternate bid included in the project to give pricing to pave the remainder of Eleventh Avenue Northwest going south from the project endpoint to the road's current limits. That will be evaluated and at the cost of the money property owners. Bids will be accepted and open on March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Any questions for City Engineer Jenna or staff? Otherwise, the action requested a night will be to approve the twenty twenty-five CIP plans and specs and to advertise for bids.
So the road's gonna go south of Eleventh Avenue, across Tenth Street, straight into the new Eleventh Avenue, which will then kind of shut back over, right? So how far south of Tenth Street will the new entrance be to get into that? They must have to go so far south before you can turn into the parking, new parking lot, or the old parking lot.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it seems weird, like, it feels like you'd be right on that angle, and that's where the turn would be? I don't know.
Well, and actually, the preliminary park plans, it was in that curvature that you would be entering into some of the, into that parking lot. But it was decided not to go with that. And we're actually using where the tree, current tree clearings are instead. So we had cleared some of the trees. I took it in water main where the, where the proposed lineup was for Eleventh. And then there is, we had also cleared trees to put the sanitary sewer in to extend out for Bear Cave Estates and also extending out to the west. So that, where the sanitary sewer is, that will be where the connection is into the softball field parking lot area. And then where the tree clearing is, where our water main went in, that's basically the alignment where the street's going.
Cool.
So that's not exactly how it's going to look. That's an older envisioning, but.
And how wide is the road on the north side of Tenth Street?
On the north side, I believe it's forty-four.
Not like I super much care, I trust you.
It's a forty-two, forty-four. And on the north end of this newer section that we're putting in, we are adding, putting turn lanes, so it will be wider at the actual intersection. As we go south, though, and we get to where the, where we will have the entrance into the park, we're narrowing down. One, we're dealing with some wetlands. Two, we wanted to mostly keep it to the existing roadbed. Two, it's a road that doesn't really go much further. It's not proposed anytime in the near future to extend very far. So we kept it to the twenty-six feet.
Looks great.
Jenna's done a good job of laying out that what will be park extension area and maybe a trailhead area on the west side of this new street. And then today, we started discussions on how the two parking lots could look in ingress, egress points. So you might see some changes as time goes by there as we adapt to what would be good for the park and accessibility.
With the project, we will be putting in two ponds. And with the ponds and the material, we also will be doing our mass balance and creating a spot for a potential future trailhead. That's shown in that. We aren't going to be putting gravel in or paving or doing anything, but you will see grading work that would show a future location for that. We're taking care of that now because we have, we have to put the material somewhere and just kind of take care of that situation now.
All move that we approve and go forward. We have a motion to approve the CIP plans and specs and advertise for bids. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
How many other owners are there for that second? I think, is there like three or two?
Two.
Just two? Okay.
Two there.
Three of us.
The third one, yes, just a very small, like, roadway, so he's not.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, but also carries. Next under motion is the general business, it'd be off sale liquor license. In December, the council approved an on-sale liquor license for NLC Incorporated, Riverview Greens Golf Course and Event Center. They have now submitted an application for off-sale liquor license to be held in combination with their on-sale license. So the action request would be to approve an off-sale license for NLC Incorporated doing businesses at Addison's Tavern on the Greens, subject to proper application. Any questions or discussion on this?
I don't have any.
Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to approve an off-sale license.
I'm moving to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item, twenty twenty-five maintenance agreement with Homestead County. That's, you'll find, the annual maintenance agreement is submitted by Homestead County. This agreement covers County Road one oh six from Highway sixty-three to south of the Point Drive southeast, point eight fours of a mile, and County Road thirty-five from County Road eight east to the I ninety bridge, four, point four two tenths of a mile. The city has reimbursed by Homestead County in the amount of seven thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, which is up from last year's amount of sixty-six, six thousand six hundred twenty-five and twenty-four cents. Public Works Director Hale is recommending approval of the contract. So the council action requested approve the agreement submitted by Homestead County. Questions or discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Public Works is the next one under motions and general business. John Deere mower replacement. Our John Deere Z nine nine seven zero-turn mower is up for its rotation for trade-in. Odies has offered us ten thousand for trade-in towards a twenty twenty-five Z nine nine seven mower at state contract price of twenty-five thousand two hundred eighty-six and four cents, making our purchase price fifteen thousand two eighty-six and four cents. So the council action requested would be approve trading the twenty twenty John Deere Z nine nine seven Odies power and equipment for a twenty twenty-five John Deere Z nine nine seven for a total cost of fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and four cents. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. We just ran out of motions and general business, and that'll take us to mayor staff consultant reports. Tonight on the mayor's report. It's kind of different. We've only got one family this time for sym- symphases to, which is kind of a thing, because I knew we've only got one. We'll send our symphases to the families of Cadu Jorgensen. And don't forget that Winterfence, Winterfest, is sponsored by the Chamber. It runs February fourth through February eighth. Have a great time, fall in love with Sturfield down there. There's gonna be lots of fun planned for everyone. And who knows, we might even have a little snow on the ground by then. It's still Winterfest, so. Pogs Fun Night, Parents Graduating Seniors at Sportsman's Club. That's this Saturday evening, February first. If you haven't got a ticket, you might be able to find some yet for one of the parents. It's always a good time, and it's always turns out to be a great night for our seniors later on. Ducks Unlimited Bingo is February eighth at the Sportsman's Club. And don't forget, sign up for code red. That's our Sturfield Alert System for when it does snow. And it will snow before this year's duck. So please sign up because it's no fun to wake up in the morning and find that kickadog there. That's all I have for this evening. Bill, city engineers report.
Well, just a short report this time. Obviously, we're working on the developments up in the Schuman Business Park, so those continue to roll on in a good way. And then working with their land power and people's energy as they continue their review work of a hopeful substation that they'd like in our area because they'll, we have secondary source of power to minimize outages. And so we'll keep working with them on that. And then I visited with one of you already, but just a reminder that as this new year comes by, if you see trainings either by the League of Cities or ones that are city-related or council-related, be sure to let us know. We'll get you signed up, registered, and those kind of things throughout the whole year, so.
Have you got any workshop dates in mind, or are you waiting for?
Traditionally, we've done that end of February, first part of March, you know, rough timeframe, so we can do a, do a poll for the call, or do a survey with.
So let's council kind of pick up the schedules, and she was, come together and something.
You all seem to like that half-day kind of thing for a few hours in the morning, so that's a thought. We'll try that again.
All right, any other questions for Bill? All right, thank you, Bill. Are you gonna do the finance director's report, or?
So far, so good. We're in the, in between lulls, a big thing, big things. Obviously, the auditing work will be the next big item in that category, so we hope to work with them.
Thank you. Public Works Director Sean.
I reported there, one thing I just wanted to order. We've been spending quite a bit of time with cotton buffalo. And it's a controversial deal because it's leaving a whole bunch of dead timber down there. And we have discussed some other possibilities of doing some equipment, basically a drum mulcher, looking at something like that to help out there. Otherwise, the goats are doing a good job, but some of our buck aren't been there so long, it's big enough that the goats aren't gonna get that. We're gonna have to get out there and mulch that stuff down and let the goats keep eating the fresh stuff that come up with food to feed afterwards. So I'm getting some pricing on some stuff to come to you in the future to see if, what you guys want to do with that. I just hate to see us waste all the money of the goats, and we still have a problem if we're done. So it's something that I think we need to look at.
I was out there today with Sean, taking a tour through what they have done so far in my work that they. And I think each one of you get the opportunity to go out with Sean. I'm, I myself is a hundred percent of the eye getting a brush cutter so we can get that cleaned up out there. Right now, my own personal opinion, it looks worse now than it did before they started cutting stuff down. And it's all big brushy stuff. I think we've been very fortunate. The amount of time the guys put a lot of hard work into it, that somebody hasn't lost an eye or got hurt in that mess, it's just kind of a jungle out there. But you each need to take a tour with Sean.
The issue with cutting that leave in it also is that wood is suspended and it's dry. And it does not break down and rot because it's suspended. So if you go out there with a drum mulcher, you can mulch up everything we did and get it laid flat on the ground, chopped up so that it holds the moisture, and eventually breaks down, and it's not a fire hazard. Because right now, especially with the California issues going on, that would be kind of a fire hazard as much brush is just laying there. It just got so far behind over so much.
Everything. They wanted her going in, into these really dense areas and cutting.
We've been doing it with what we have, and the guys have been doing it by hand. But a drum mulcher would be the best way to do it. And we would use it for future stuff, too.
And attaches to the bobcat, or?
Yeah.
You need to go look at it, guys, really. I tell you what, the one thing that really struck me is when you had me back there in the trails. We got a couple benches people have had placed there. And they're really great places to look at the river, but all you can see is buckthorn as high as the ceiling or piles of, not a pile of, you can't even see the river. I mean, it's, it's gonna look pretty bare when they get done for a little bit, but it'll all fill back in better than it was before. So I, but you need, each need to get a hold of Sean and get out.
The seed for buckthorn will stay active for up to five years. So if that's laying on the ground for five years, you're gonna have new growth coming of buckthorn. So you're gonna have to, then the goats will eat that new growth. But if you don't get rid of the stuff dropped in the seeds, we're never gonna get ahead of it.
Any other Sean? Oh, you guys get any questions, one? If you get a second, have him give you a write-around up, too. Thank you, Sean. All right, city engineer report. Jenna, you got anything for us?
Well, thank you for allowing us to advertise for the CIP project. Hopefully, we do continue work for Legacy. Maybe those plans, we're at about thirty percent completed for design there. And it looks like we're gonna have at least six construction projects going this summer in town for roadways only.
Great. Keep you busy.
Or Dylan.
Any questions for Jenna? Many of the projects are. All right, thank you, Jenna. Let's see, no fires chief's report, no pool director report. And now for a report we haven't heard for quite a while. Library director need.
Uh, well, yeah. Things are going okay. It's our adult winner reading program just started. Folks have a chance to read three or four books over the, between January twenty-first and March twenty-first. I've got two in so far, so I try to do a blackout of the bingo card every year. So I got Stone Blind and Farewell My Lovely knocked off. And I'm, I'm leading it, Thomas Pinchett now, really rolling through there. And this Saturday is gonna be our first ever Saturday storytime. We're gonna try and do at least one of those a month going forward. Sarah's gonna be going back, doing that one. And, and we could, yeah, we just really have a lot of things cooking. I hope you don't mind me including the calendar in my director's report and the stuff we got going on. I think, you know, February and March are gonna be pretty busy months, so I thought I'd throw that out of your way. And, boy, I've really been doing a lot of stuff, but mostly boring boss at a jet, at a desk behind a computer.
I have a Horizon Evergreen question.
Yes, sir.
So Horizon currently is the company that handles all your circulation.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep.
So I assume there's, there's a handful of them out there, and from the way that it was worded, Horizon seems to be a little bit wildly outdated, as you put it.
Yeah.
And switch it to Evergreen, then. What is all the training that takes place? Because in my mind, I'm looking at it like, you're just getting rid of all these books sponsored by or provided by them, and you're bringing in all these books provided by them, and you just gotta figure out where they go.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the main things that we're gonna need, uh, need training on are circulation. You know, checking books in, checking books out is just slightly different. Evergreen is also web-based, so one of the cool things about Evergreen is, so if we do, you know, an outreach event at the school or, you know, like a farmer's market or something like that, as long as we have an internet connection, we can check books in and check books out and make people's library cards right there. That's something we can't do with Horizon because Wi-Fi didn't exist when Horizon was.
Yeah, that's outdated.
Yeah, yeah, right. And so that's a big change. You know, how books are catalogued and in, how magazines are done. Yeah, just kind of like the backend stuff, there's just a lot of training and stuff. Like, it's not, I've worked with, I think this'll be my fifth different circulation software that we're switching over to. And so it's like not a big deal to me, but to a lot of the folks in Selco, this is their first time, they've only known Horizon, so it's like.
But the variety of books that you get, the titles that you get to choose from is virtually the same.
Yep.
It's just how it's all categorized and.
And it'll be, because it's such old, the, the, the background of this is so old. There's, when you do a search on stuff, you'll actually, this is a great example, you'll actually kind of like. I looked up the Batman graphic novel, The Killing Joke, you know, which is like, yeah. And I did a search, I did a title search on The Killing Joke, and the top three things that came out in Horizon this summer, right when we were looking to replace it. The first one was The Right Thing, the graphic novel. The second one was a, the film adaptation of The Killing Joke. And the third thing was A Juvenile Biography of Joe Biden. Okay, like, like, it's just like, it's.
I had to switch.
You know, it is broken, and, you know, people are getting bad results on searches. So like the precision and accuracy that people have with their searches is gonna just, it's, it's such a quantum leap forward to nineteen, or to two thousand eighteen from nineteen ninety-six.
Is it gonna be done by May first?
Uh, it's gonna go live on May first. We're probably gonna be unable to check books in and check books out in the traditional manner for what we're doing then. And then, yeah, we should be good to go. Like, we've, we're just kind of like knocking off little benchmarks along the way, I'm totally on pace.
Great. Thanks, mate. All right, Dale, take us into committee commissioner board reports, Chamber of Commerce. You got the Winterfest events, there's a listing in there of all the things that are going on. We got a pretty full schedule for next Thursday. EDA, HRA, we just had our January meeting, I'm gonna have to be in there. And the housing program is already taking on a pretty lot of applications on that. They were talking about something on a couple of programs, which will be discussed in the February meeting. Finance?
Right now, just audit.
Library?
We don't need for a few weeks yet.
All right, cardboard?
That last couple of weeks ago. Then is there any?
Personnel?
We've started the recruitment process for the finance officer position. Hopefully, it's, when we get to the interview stage, most, if not all of you, can work with staff. We do that, so we'll keep you posted on that. And we'd like you to participate since that's more of a supervisory position, so.
Nope, I was waiting to hear that.
Buying zoning?
From page to paper today, get the update on the business park, but other than that, nothing.
All the safety?
My yearly calls for service was in the last one. If you guys have any questions, I can answer anything about that. We had fifty-four hundred, five thousand four hundred twenty-five, which was up from five thousand three hundred two last year, so a hundred twenty-three calls extra, which is not. Again, I would say that that's pretty normal.
I actually thought once you got a board and drop weight.
I don't know if you got involved in it or not, but like Sean had mentioned that the cameras caught the kids out at the wastewater.
That's why.
And I, I saw in there that it, they just said parents agreed to pay for it, so I'm guessing there was a deal worked out with no charges or whatnot. But were you able, I assume that you looked to see if they were tied into whatever else has been going on around here? Did you have any luck on any of that?
Yeah, so I know of them.
How old are they?
Twelve.
Oh, they're really young, okay.
So that's, that's why the agreement is, is there, because they're on a page.
Well, that's better than the charges anyhow, you're not gonna get anything. But were they tied into the other shenanigans that you had going on at your, at the other shop, I presume?
I agree with them also. I don't know what I should say to that, I mean, we know they. We've seen them around town, we're under things, but.
Other kids can't say they need anything else, so. Well, either way, good work.
Through, I mean, just looking at all the numbers from past years, in the last three years, we've over-doubled our traffic stops here. And I think that that has to do with obviously getting or having another deputy down here, having a little bit more. And I think that that has to do with obviously getting or having another deputy down here, uh, having a little bit more time to focus on roadway safety, so...
But was, uh, any injuries this morning?
Uh, not that I know of. I think it was just, uh, accident blocking, because it was, was it a FedEx truck?
Uh, no, it wasn't a, it was a box truck similar, but I don't think it was a FedEx.
I don't know. I, I started at noon today, so I don't even know.
All right, any other questions for Officer Justin? I guess Justin will be... Public Works?
Public.
You need, uh, kind of a shot?
Yep, I'm going to do it this week.
Ready?
Uh, biggest thing we're trying to work together on is helping each other with housing options, housing possibilities, encouraging developers to look at all of our green city communities for hopeful, um, housing that we can expand to, too. Obviously, the commercial side's been going great for us, industrial side, so now hopefully we can balance that out over time with, um, housing.
Rokov?
Uh, this last meeting, we just met last week, and that was the start of the year, the new, uh, folks on board. And, uh, just laying out some of the, uh, tack items for the coming season here.
No transit advisory committee tonight, or did you have anything on that, Bill?
Uh, nothing yet. Our last meeting, it got postponed, and so they made quarterly, so we'll probably be coming up here in March or early.
No communications in the packet. Uh, final motion of the evening, do adjourn. Move to adjourn. Second motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.